Her competence, and I don't think any of them were prepared to make that argument.
These are understandable political reasons. They come on top of the argument that Biden just handed his entire political apparatus to Harris. But there is another argument for competition that I think is worth exploring, and it's the argument that basically any competition, even if it's weak competition, does Harris favors because it forces her to become a stronger, more battle-tested candidate in a way that she wouldn't be if she simply coronated in a matter of days.
Yeah. I mean, that sounds right if you were writing a script for a television show. You would want there to be competition. But here in real life, Democrats are petrified of Donald Trump winning the election again, and they are eager to move forward with a candidate who they can unite behind and make the case that Donald Trump should not be elected. And the Biden campaign could not convince voters that Biden was up to the job of being the president again for another four years. And they think that Harris is going to be able to prosecute the case of all the things that they want voters to worry about with Trump in a way that Biden could not. And the first order of business on that is abortion, an issue in which she is far more comfortable talking about than Biden is and of much far more adept messenger to make the case about Trump and abortion rights than Biden ever has been.
Mm-hmm. So that's an area where you're looking for early signs that Kamala Harris, the likely nominee, is truly able to distinguish herself and prove herself perhaps a possessor of greater political skills than she is by reputation.
Yeah, and I think her political skills are better than her reputation, frankly. She ran a lousy campaign for president in 2020, and then after Joe Biden was elected, she was handed a portfolio of impossible issues. She was given the border. She was given voting rights. But really, since the Dobbs decision two years ago,
overturning Roe v. Wade, yep.
She's been a much more capable public performer. And my guess is that people who or whom the image of her was cemented early in her vice presidency may wind up being surprised at how she performs under the bright lights of being the nominee herself.
Right. But if it turns out that her short general election campaign doesn't go well, and if she doesn't beat Trump, how much of the blame will belong directly to Joe Biden for putting the party and Harris in this situation by discouraging anyone else from running against him? I mean, he changed the primary calendar to favor him and him alone. He ditched Iowa and started the primaries in South Carolina, a state he knew he would win. I mean, how much of this is going to be on him if Harris loses?
Well, you should be clear that Biden made a choice to seek reelection, but it was the rest of the party, with the exception of a little-known congressman from Minnesota, who made the collective decision not to challenge Joe Biden for reelection. There would have been tens of millions of dollars available for a candidate in the mold of Bernie Sanders to run from Biden's left. There was talk of billionaire candidates like J.B. Pritzker getting in the race and self-funding. But I don't think it's necessarily fair to blame Biden for the lack of competition.
Mm-hmm.
It's the rest of the party that covered their eyes and told everyone that Biden would be fine that bear more of the responsibility on this front.
And that makes me wonder, as a concluding question here, do you think that the Democratic Party needs to just have a bigger conversation about competition and about more people entering into these races? I mean, there's no absence of competition on the Republican side despite the huge way in which Donald Trump leans over that party.
You know, Michael, this is less a story about competition as it is a story about the elites of the party not listening to their own voters. There was ample evidence over years that large percentages of Democrats did not want Joe Biden to run for a second term. But when he did, they all stepped aside and gave him a glide path to the nomination anyway. And the result that they got was a deeply flawed nominee who couldn't make it to the finish line. And now it's so late in the game that there's no time to have a real competition to replace him.
Please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
On Monday night, a majority of Democratic delegates endorsed Vice President Harris as Biden's replacement, and she moved quickly to assert herself as the de facto Democratic nominee. Harris asked former Attorney General Eric Holder to oversee her choice of a running mate and persuaded the current leadership of Biden's campaign to remain in place and run her campaign against Trump.
And in this campaign, I will proudly, I will proudly put my record against his.
Finally, in her first campaign speech, Harris took Trump on directly, invoking her history as a lawyer and a prosecutor.
In those roles, I took on perpetrators of all kinds, predators who abused women, fraudsters who ripped off consumers, cheaters who broke the rules for their own gain. So hear me when I say, I know Donald Trump's type.
Welcome to our evening meeting for July 23rd. The board held its regular afternoon meeting at 3 o'clock today, followed by a closed session. Item L of our Agenda Certification Resolution in the closed session just concluded. Nothing was discussed except the matters which were identified in the motions to convene in closed session. Only those matters lawfully permitted to be discussed under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed. Is there a motion to adopt the certification resolution?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. A second?
A second.
Will a clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item M, second readings of ordinances and public hearings. Item one, the petition of Roanoke Valley Holdings LLC to remove the proffered condition on approximately 50.8 acres of land zoned R1C, low-density residential district with conditions, in order to develop a residential subdivision located near the 6200 block of Crumpacker Drive, Hollins Magisterial District. Chair recognizes Philip Thompson, Director of Planning, for the second reading and public hearing. Philip?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. As you mentioned, this original request was to remove a proffered condition on 50 acres of property located in the Hollins Magisterial District. The property location, it's in the northern portion of the orchards. You know, the orchard sits between Route 460 and 220, behind Walmart. So Remountain Preserve and the Butts Remountain Preserve to the north, and then a lot of the residential subdivision that exists to the south, east and west. So roughly, it's in the 6200 block of Crumpacker Drive, a little over 50 acres, currently vacant. So again, the original request was to remove the condition from a 2005 rezoning to develop the parcel as a residential subdivision. And we'll talk more about that as we go. As far as community outreach, we did have 145 left out to adjoining property owners. We did hold a community meeting on Monday, May 13th, at Bonsec Elementary School. There were actually 35 citizens attend that and nine submitted written comments, which I believe is in your packet, from that meeting. Couple photos. This is looking at the kind of the easement that kind of goes up to the water tank. I know we walked it for the planning commission, public hearing, we met out there. And this is looking off to Remountain Preserve and some of the one residential house to the right. Yeah, this is Crumpacker Drive, looking back down as, you know, so the property's off to the left. So you can see the type of residential street and the homes that are on that that would access, they would be traveling this way to and from this property. Just kind of looking south of that where that easement is or that road to go to the water tank, again, part of the residential subdivision that exists as part of the orchards. Little bit of background on the property. Back in 2005, it was rezoned from AG3 to R1C. The C means condition. So there was a proffered condition that was put on the property that limited the subdivision to no more than 65 lots, in that it would be developed in general conformance with the concept plan. The property was never developed and currently remains vacant. So this is the proffered plan from the 2005 rezoning. Kind of shows the general layout of the roads and the lots as well. So obviously, we do allow single-family homes as a by right use in R1. They would have to meet all the development standards for R1 standards. And obviously, if this was approved, obviously, there would be site plan and building plan review required of this project before any construction took place. The proposed concept plan that they have in their application. So for the property in question is looking at 86 lots. So that's an increase of 21. They also show a property that they also own to the south, which is already zoned R1, has no proffered conditions on it, and is not part of this zoning application. Kind of similar in design as the previous proffered plan as far as the road layout is concerned. Existing zoning, it is R1 with conditions. So low-density residential. To the north is AG3. That's the Remountain Preserve. To the east is AG3 and R1. Again, that's the Remountain Preserve and the subdivision, R1, to the south, and then AG3 and AG3 with a special use permit. I believe that special use permit is for a water tank. That was approved. Future land use is neighborhood conservation. Neighborhood conservation is a future land use area where established single-family neighborhoods are delineated, and the conservation of existing development pattern has occurred. So a residential subdivision is consistent with that future land use designation. Planning Commission held a public hearing earlier this month on July 2nd. There were 14 citizens who spoke during the public hearing, all in opposition to the petition. So many of the citizens explained that they purchased their homes with the understanding that the future development of 65 homes on the subject parcel. They said that the homes were proposed to be larger lots with larger homes in the same development pattern as the existing ones in the Samuel's Gate neighborhood. Their point of contention with the rezoning in relation to the new design was that the proposed lot sizes and home designs would not be consistent with the existing neighborhood and would feel too crowded compared to the existing lots. Some citizens added that the current townhouses and apartments being built at the end of Crumpacker are already changing the character of the neighborhood. Multiple concerns were raised about the increase of traffic and the impact of that on the safety and walkability of the neighborhood. Citizens were worried about protecting the Remountain Preserve, including the view sheds, trails, and wildlife. And the neighbors also had concerns about stormwater runoff, drainage, water and sewer system demands, grading, and damage of the current quality of life in the neighborhood. So the Planning Commission discussed the previous plan layout versus the proposed plan layout. They looked at proposed home elevation and home sizes. I think the applicant will go over with you all in their presentation. Topography, by right R1 development standards, housing shortage in the Roanoke Valley. They talked about detention ponds, stormwater management, lot drainage, roads, road capacity and traffic, the existing water tank on the property or adjacent to the property, possible road connections to Gregg and Drive, proffering the concept plan showing 86 lots on the property, surrounding land use and zoning, and then future land use designation as well. So during the meeting, the applicant agreed to, instead of remove the proffered condition, to amend the proffered condition and actually proffer the concept plan that's part of his application. So the Planning Commission recommends approval of the project with the following amended proffered condition. So you would strike the previous proffer, but then add the property shall be developed in general conformance, with the concept plan showing 86 lots entitled "Crumpacker Property, Roanoke, Virginia, Resoning Concept, prepared by Engineering Concepts, Inc., dated April 2, 2024. Subject to any changes required during the conference plan, site plan reprocess." So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any questions for Mr. Thompson?
Yes, sir.
I have none?
No.
Mr. Radford?
Sorry. So just a little bit of history. Why, and I know Mr. Mahoney was around in 2005, because I saw his name on there, but why was, why did Fraylon Waldron go to 65 lots on that piece of land? I mean, why didn't we do it without a lot restriction? Don't know? Don't remember?
Don't remember. Sorry. Don't remember.
Stormwater challenges, if you go back and read the minutes in the report, the board report.
Yeah.
It was concerns over stormwater runoff.
Okay. Were they, okay, all right. That's all I got. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. At this time, I'd like to invite any representatives for the petitioners to speak. Mr. Fraylon?
Can you tell me which button to push? Perfect. Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thanks for your time tonight. I'm Robert Fraylon. I know most of you or all of you, and I'm going to be fairly brief with this presentation. I importantly want you to meet some of the team members here, so they can briefly introduce themselves. Lastly, we'll be Bobby Wampler with Engineering Concepts, who will be able to answer any technical questions that you might have. But I thought it was important, we're based in Roanoke County and have been so for, it's been roughly 19 years now, and we're at Valley Point. If anybody wants to ever stop by and say hello, we'd love to discuss any issues at hand. But it's just been a wonderful experience of being in Roanoke County. And so truly, I mean, this has been a great place to work. And then if you guys wouldn't mind introducing yourselves, I won't introduce you, and just tell them who you are.
Hello. My name is Wyn Phillips. I'm Operations Manager for our Fraylon Associates, our property management division. I've had the pleasure of working for the company for almost four years. I get to work with our home sales division and property management and participate in rezonings and many other things that the company needs from me. Thank you for hearing us tonight.
Good evening. My name is Brian McHale. I'm the COO of the company and been with them for about nine years now. And as relates to home building, I'm involved in starting homes, pricing them, get involved in rezonings and financing and things of that nature. So really look forward to building this project out and providing more homes for the county. Thanks for hearing us.
And I think you're going to hear a lot from Bobby anyway, so we'll hold him for a little bit later. He's been great for us. Anyway, it's been a journey in this industry, and I think there's a big question. First of all, why are we going from 65 to this number? And the truth is, I bought this from Fraylon Waldron, and I asked them, why is it zoned this way? And they said, I don't know. I really can't remember. Andy Kelderhouse, if you have him on speed dial, he'll tell you the same thing. He doesn't remember. And so it just didn't seem logical to me that with such a lack of developable property in the area to not at least put on a piece of land that has utilities, you know, the units that it can take, because there's such precious land with utilities, it's so hard to find. So and people will say, well, he just wants to make more money. And the truth of the matter is, that's true, but the costs are different now than they used to be. It's getting laborious to pay for all of this. And yes, I wouldn't do it if it didn't make money out of it. And I don't want to, you know, say that I'm not in it to make some money, but also know there's a shortage of housing in the community. And it doesn't, the two things aren't mutually exclusive. You can financially do well and have folks that work with you that can also, you know, make a living and provide something good for the community, and that would be our goal. So shortly, I'm going to go through this presentation, because I know, you know, it's late and you guys have other things to do tonight. So these are just types of houses that we could build on that land. Because of what we paid for it and where it is, it does not unfortunately render itself to starter housing or even affordable, defined technically by, you know, anything under $400,000. I just can't see that possibly happening here. However, it will be nice, and it'll be upscale, and it'll be commensurate with what's already there. I can do that type of housing, but not, I can't do that here. It's just my basis is too high. This is just the difference between the two, which, you know, of course, the new one has more lots, but it's just to show that it's not noticeably different. This is the focus on the proffered concept plan. And if I'm going too fast, let me know. I can stop at any slide. Just a little bit of background about the orchards community. That was rezoned probably before any of our time, I think in the 60s, maybe in mid 70s. And it was about 1,800 units, plus or minus in Roanoke County, and then another couple hundred units in Bodatack County. So this was a very large community when it was rezoned back when I was about, I think I was six or seven years old. So I certainly wasn't part of the process. Nor was it my dad that did this. The Fraylon and the Fraylon Waldron was my Uncle Horace. So I was not tied to this. This concept does add 21 lots to the original plan. I'm not going to read all this. You have this in front of you, and I don't want to take your time. But the point of the matter is, we're still below, well below, and not because of my benevolence, but because the topography does not allow the maximum density here anyway. So we would be at 1.7 units per acre under this concept, which is far below what's allowed, as you know. These are the, what's allowed, and it's just illustrating how we're above what's allowed for almost, almost all the lots. There are going to be, in this concept, there are 31 62-foot lots. There were also 62-foot lots in the former plan. There will be 52 lots that are above 65, 65 or above, most of them above 65 in width. And then the acreage, you guys have the data from Mr. Thompson, but the acreage is obviously very large because of the topography challenges. It's not because of my benevolence, want to give me green space or something. It's just, it's just the way this is. So the lots are very large. It, future land use, you know this better than I do. It's just showing what this, that this is commensurate with what would be planned for this area. This is kind of interesting. The traffic is always, I've done a lot of these, and I've never done one that traffic wasn't a problem. And nobody likes more traffic. However, in this particular case, there are six means of egress, one of which is actually Walmart or Lowe's, that area, which is not, in a real emergency, I guess you could get there. But that's all the slides designating. And then that's, then that's, that's the homes again, and I guess the point of the matter, future residents of Roanoke County would live in these homes. And that's really it. And that was probably longer than you would want, but that, I want to be brief, because I want the time for any questions you have. I'm happy to answer anything, and I know Bobby is too. And if it's real technical, he will be better at it than I will.
Any questions, board?
I do.
Please.
All right. First of all, on the plat, when I was going back through, looking at it.
Yeah.
When you go up to the end where Morning Glory connects to Crumpacker, on the left, I noticed that it looks like it has a main stormwater spillout right there.
Okay.
And it, I had asked a question to actually one of your other people, out on the field when I was at another place that you were building. I asked one of the guys, and he said he thought that was going to be like a stormwater pond.
Right.
But I have noticed on other plats, when I'm going through, looking at them, that it says future homes with lots subdivided on it.
So when you go into the neighborhood?
I can, I don't think I can pull this up on any kind of screen, but I will pull it up right here.
May I approach the bench?
I guess. I'm not a judge. I'm just saying.
Thanks for asking. Yes, you can.
So this is where, this is where Morning Glory and Crumpacker meet, the land. So there's like a gravel drive that goes, if you keep going out Crumpacker, you'd ride right through it. And over in there is a big, like a water drainage spillout location, a big stormwater pipe. And then if you keep going all the way back, it would connect to Gregg and. And when, before I was mentioned that it would be a, like a holding pond area, but then on other plats that I've seen, it shows future lots. What, what is the intention for that?
Yeah, Bobby's going to address, address all that. I think it's a combination of lots and storm.
Okay.
But he's going to get into it because I do, I don't want to deal with his thunder, but the way this, this property drains now, there is no stormwater management at all.
Right. Right.
And this would certainly change that.
Okay.
But he'll, he'll address this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
No, sir.
Question, Robert.
Please.
Let's look at lots one through twenty-one on the eighty-six, or the hundred and seven lot map there. One through twenty-one, what kind of homes are they going to be? They're the ones that are by right.
Oh, the ones that are not part of this?
The ones that are part, yeah.
Yeah. Again, because of what I was required to pay for this, I just can't do anything but upscale housing.
And so the four models that you have there that you've shown, what's the square footage range?
They are above two thousand for the most part. Are any of those less than two thousand, Brian?
Yeah.
And some of which, when you finish the basement, could be up close to three.
Okay. What are the estimated price points range?
Probably four twenty-five to eight. And it wouldn't surprise me if somebody gets, you know, this is, the views up there are tremendous. I don't know if you've had a chance to go up there. And I'm building a home right now in Roanoke County that somebody's done a phenomenal amount of upgrades that doesn't have these views. So you just don't know what people will spend.
Yeah. There's a couple of people that I've spoken to. They're, you know, they're ready to sign contracts on a large acreage, not a small one. I told them I ought to call you, maybe you could cut a deal now. But I've been all over that property five times. I mean, I feel like, I feel like I know it with my eyes closed. And there are some nice views up at the top right side when you have to walk through all that undergrowth, not to mention blackberries. We've got one board member that likes blackberries.
That attracts a certain animal, doesn't it?
But anyway, yeah, there's some great views up there. But anyway, that was, you answered my question. So lots one through twenty-one, even though it's not part of this petition, I was told that they were going to be like townhouses or something like that.
They're not plotted for that. They can't be townhouses.
And you think you can get four hundred and fifty thousand dollar houses at two to three thousand square feet on that, on those size lots in that?
I think I can get more than that. I think it costs me close to that.
I'm talking about on the by right.
Oh.
One through twenty-one.
Yes, because, you know, you, although you don't have as much yard, not everybody wants a yard, they want a nice house. But I might not be the best expert at that. There may be somebody else here that's even better than I.
Okay.
I think, you know, the point of the matter is, I can't, I can't build affordable housing here. It's just, it's, I've just, I have too much in it. And it's not the right location for it.
Okay, that's all the questions I have at this time.
Yeah, I got a follow-up.
Do you have a question, Mr. Rapp?
You opened Pandora's box on that. So lot one through twenty-one, which are not part of?
Part of the petition.
You've got over there on your scale, a forty by fifty-five, which is twenty-two hundred and forty square feet. That's a patio home.
Right.
Are you going to do an HOA?
For that community alone? Our intention would be to do an HOA for all of it.
Okay. Two HOAs or one?
No, just one for all of it. And I think, and I should know, but I don't. I think we would also want to join the Orchards HOA master because of stormwater.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay, thank you very much, Robert.
And I'll just be sitting here, of course.
Who's next up? Bobby Wampler?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Bobby Wampler, President of Engineering Concepts. I'll try to hit three items that were kind of preemptive. Obviously, we know stormwater will be a hot topic. And I will focus, this property is primarily developed into three existing drainage patterns. We have the west, which goes to the defined channel, kind of went to the area you were speaking to. The center of the site kind of sheet flows currently down onto the existing neighborhood. And then there's a channel to the east. So with the portion of the property that's highlighted in red, which is the by right, we actually are already pretty close to a complete design with that particular project to submit to Roanoke County for technical review. And really, the development of that section really eliminates the sheet flow of the property or the subject property onto the existing homes. We'll be putting in homes, we'll put the, obviously, the road infrastructure and drainage patterns. That will now intercept the flows that are coming off the current property. That water will be diverted to either the eastern or western channel. So any drainage that's currently coming off the property or with the future development, that, that has now been removed from impacts downstream. And then as a result of the development of the site, the eastern channel tends to flow through the majority of the existing residential development. And again, the way the road networks lend itself on this property, lots generally draining to the roadways with storm piping. Most of our water actually is going to be diverted to the western channel. So if we had a portion of drainage going to the eastern channel, we'll actually be reducing the existing amount of acreage going through the existing residential neighborhood through the development of the project, in addition to meeting the current stormwater management regulations. So that kind of shifts. Now we have the drainage over to the west. And with that particular section of the site, there used to be an existing pond that got breached sometime in the last nineteen years. As part of the development of the concept plan for this project, we have done a wetlands delineation and stream delineation with the core engineers. So there is a portion of that old pond that has to remain, that we're not going to impact. But we will be building a new stormwater facility on that western section, again, meeting current regulations from, from two thousand and five, when the original concept was developed. The regulations that we have to meet in two thousand and twenty-four, in fact, as of the Planning Commission, July first, we have even newer regulations than even when we submitted the plan for the rezoning. So we will have to both reduce volume of runoff as a ratio to the amount of flow that's reduced, twenty percent below that going downstream. So the amount of runoff that we will be sending downstream of the project will be at a lower impact than even existing runoff with the forested condition. And this also does tend to send the drainage down to more of a undeveloped property, which Frayland Waldron still owns, that's undeveloped down off West Hurricane, sorry, East Hurricane. So from a stormwater standpoint, this project should improve runoff conditions from the property. Traffic, obviously, this, this property is at the tail end of development. This was a master planned community from back to the sixties or seventies. All the details certainly weren't ironed out at that point. But if anyone's come up Cortland, you could just about land an airplane on the roadway with the widths that are there. They're probably maybe even oversized for, for what we're currently seeing that's been developed there. But as we get up into the top of the site, we are getting at the tail end of the project. We still have thirty-six foot face of curb to face of curb road widths. And as we look at the VDOT standards for capacity, that has a capacity of four thousand vehicles per day per VDOT regulations. This concept plan that's been proffered with the existing traffic on Crumpacker generates about two thousand trips per day. So even with the additional traffic, we are fifty percent of VDOT stated capacity for current subdivision design regulations. And then density, you know, that was probably a point more for the Planning Commission because at that time, this plan had not been proffered. So the point I would just make out is, when Mr. Frayland purchased the property and asked us to look at concept plans, we were not beholden to the two thousand and five plan. We looked at this with fresh eyes. And I think what you will see from, from the impacts of the existing drainage ways on the site, from the topography, the sites really kind of only lend itself to develop in a particular way. And that's why you'll see very strong similarities between our concept plan and the two thousand and five plan. And that's probably best demonstrated on the western side of the site with that spine road. You'll notice, and I guess we can go back to this one, it's almost the same alignment. Really what's happening, we're just getting narrower lot width. So while we do show on our concept plan, lot width's down to sixty-two foot width. The majority of them will be larger than that. But just again, same road lengths, same infrastructure planned, but reducing lot widths, you therefore pick up density. The other thing I will point out, it's not completely official. There is an AEP easement that bisects the site. That infrastructure has been removed in the past year. And we've been in contact with VDOT, with AEP. So I have been informed that the release agreement has been signed by AEP to release that easement. We're just waiting for the recorded copy. And that was as of June eighteenth. So my guess is that's pretty close to being completely official. And even if it weren't, again, this is a concept plan. You may have some detailed questions I can't answer at this time. But it's a concept plan. Even if the easement were to stay, we could adjust the lots and infrastructure to still accommodate this concept plan in general performance. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Bobby? Mr. Rapp?
Yeah. What'd you say the maximum density was without the topography?
Oh, well, I should know that. Well, we can get down to seventy-two hundred square foot lot, so.
Okay. You're based on seventy-two hundred square feet. Okay. So two, two hundred homes?
Oh, probably, yes.
Okay.
I can whip out the calculator.
Okay, so when you got the, when you got the layout, how did you, did you lay it out and you just, you came up with eighty-six or you directed to do eighty-six?
No, we were not directed. In fact, at one time, we had the eastern and west roads connected into a loop. And that was prior to the environmental work. And as we did the environmental studies, looked at the impacts across that stream, we really decided that that really wasn't, it didn't really gain anything. It created an environmental impact. So we removed that connection. And then also, we had another spur that went up the mountain further, another cul-de-sac. But again, looking at infrastructure, water pressures, the ability to serve that, much like Mr. Frayland mentioned, the topography just doesn't. It just becomes impractical.
Okay. The, the topograph, you haven't done a topo on the site. You're just using?
We actually have done topography now, yes.
Is that what this is?
The concept plan before you probably is not the aerial, but we have, with the design of the area in red, we have flown the entire parcel. But this probably is not. This is probably GIS.
So?
So again, that's an undisturbed site. So it should be very similar.
Okay.
We got a topo in our, in our.
I'm looking, I'm looking at it right here, but this isn't, this isn't his topo. It's like, it looks like the fifth district topo.
My big.
Okay, that's, that's been out there. So power line's going to be abandoned. I guess I'm kind of getting that, you know, why can't we have a concept plan that has current topo on it, has the easement removed? You just said stormwater is going to be off-site now? Is that what you said earlier, the stormwater retention?
Well, the stormwater for the by right section has been designed. We obviously have not designed the final condition. Again, that would be a final design.
Where the eighty-six, where's the stormwater for the eighty-six lots?
It will probably feed down to that same general area.
To, to the off-site property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we don't, we don't have that. It's, we're just going on, you're professional. So it's nothing our planning or anybody knows about. So it's just, okay, got that. So the west, the far west street, I'm looking at this topo, and it's going up the hogback, all the way up. And so you haven't done a grading plan either, right?
We've done preliminary grading plans, yes.
Oh, okay. Have you shared that with anybody in the county?
No, sir.
Okay. I would have liked to see that. So you already have an idea where you're going to lay the houses out?
Pretty much where the concept plan shows it.
Well, the concept doesn't show me where the house is going. I'm looking at lot fifty, fifty-four through fifty-seven. There's a twelve-foot cross, a cross elevation change in lot fifty-seven. Fifty-six is last, fifty-five, fifty-four. I can't tell where the thirty-foot setback is. You know, I guess in concept plans, you know, I'd like to kind of see where it is. It also tells me, are you going to be doing, you're going to stair step those four lots? And are you going to have retaining walls and all that? Are you seeing any of that?
Yeah, I would, I would expect there will be retaining walls or buildings that have a step out, step out to the side, much like we see throughout Roanoke County on steeper lots.
Yeah. So, you know, I understand we'll see all this in the development review, correct? So right now, we don't, we're not drilling down into the details. I'm sorry, that's my development.
Sure.
Coming out. I just, you know, kind of want to kind of?
And I would say that's for us, that's a pretty typical approach, that obviously there's a great expense to go into final design. And if this were not to prevail for a positive outcome, then all that would be a sunken cost. This has been studied at length in twenty, in two thousand and five to go to rezoning. We've done numerous layouts to ensure that it's feasible. And the technical reviews kind of get to the details. We don't have an option but to meet VDOT regulations. We don't have an option but to meet DEQ regulations.
Right.
So if we can't meet it for concerns, then it won't get approved and we'll have to reduce the scale of the.
Okay. So just back to lot fifty, fifty-four through fifty-seven, the houses that he was just showing us, how wide are they?
Fifty-two for the Beverly Cross.
Yeah, in the fifties. We have some plans that aren't on here that are forty-foot wide.
Okay.
Would accommodate the sixty-two foot.
Okay. So we're having to deal with lot drainage issues right now. And so using the stair step method in a fifty-foot wide house with those four lots, you know, this is where we're getting a lot of heat from citizens right now is because we've got lot drainage issues, we've got topo challenges right there. So that's what I was asking, if you've worked something like that out in detail that you feel comfortable with and shared it, well, yeah, and share it with anybody yet, but you feel confident you can handle it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I'll just add, just if it helps, you know, we've worked on other steeper projects with Mr. Frayland. We have to have the actual topography to really get into the detailed design. We have to work through VDOT regulations because really, we have to get the road network set to meet standards. And that kind of shows what we're left with. And a lot of times, we might show on the concept plan a sixty-two foot lot width. There may be a certain mix of homes that maybe those lots get to be in the steeper sections. Maybe they're the eighty-foot lot widths. And that's what we kind of work through with technical.
Okay. So you said the streets are thirty-six feet wide?
That's the existing streets are thirty-six feet wide.
Are you going to meet that?
If I have to, I won't have to meet it for this worth, I'm just, in terms of capacity, we'll meet VDOT regulations. We won't have to be thirty-six feet wide in this.
Yeah. But you're going to take them, you're going to make them public streets, right?
Correct.
Okay. So curb and gutter or whatever you need to do there, okay? And you collect it with stormwater and all that good stuff? Okay.
Mr. Rapp, I want to just comment one thing. When we have had a problem and it's been isolated with stormwater, I've never had a problem in anything we've developed. Meaning if we develop it under the new guidelines, where I've had a problem is when I bought a lot that was already a problem. It was probably not designed properly to begin with. The fortunate part of the stricter regulations is the design criteria has gotten more severe, as you know better than anybody.
Right.
So I thought it'd be relevant to tell you that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rapp, there was something in the package, elevation.
Yeah, but that's not.
Did you see that in your package?
That's not his, though.
No, it's not yours, is what she?
I've seen that, but it's not very detailed.
No. But what this does show, whether it's detailed or not, it shows a thirty percent increase in elevation in the lower part of Crumpacker to the very top and the back of the lots on the fifty-acre parcel, just for your information. The rest of the board. Bobby, I got, anyone else got a question?
Just what I had asked Robert before.
Go ahead.
He would address it.
Go ahead and put that question for him.
Do you remember that question?
About the lots, yes.
Yes.
So we don't currently show any plans that develop that other lot, the lot that ties over to Greggin. I think it is developable. Whether that's an extension off Greggin or another extension, we, again, we kind of mentioned.
It looks like it's coming off of Morning Glory and Crumpacker. Greggin is a dead end.
Yes.
And this could tie into Greggin if it was later developed. However, right now, the road to Greggin dead ends, this right here turns into like a gravel pad. And then it has a big stormwater inlet over on the left that, or outlet that dumps out. And it looks like perhaps it may be stormwater for the subdivision we're discussing. But then on this plat that I've got, it shows it as future lots.
And I think you're probably referring to the, I'm not sure which plat. So again, there have been some concept plans developed, tie-ins to Greggin. We've looked at this since two thousand, so I'm not sure what you're.
It's this property right here. This is the property. Right. But there's one that shows right here that shows, that's it. It shows future lots, right there shows future lots.
Yeah, so that is the Fraylon and Walter master plan from two thousand and five of the whole community. So that, that's kind of an older. In fact, that was probably when that existing pond still existed and stormwater regulations were different. So we have, in the, in the course of looking at all three of these particular parcels, we have looked at developing that piece of property. Questions have come up about connections to Greggin. Everything we've looked at, a connection to Greggin really doesn't work for just the layout. In addition to Greggin, it's not a very substantial road, so probably improvements.
I guess my question is, is that gonna add additional homes to the eighty-six, is what I'm trying to figure out? Or is that gonna be, so in other words, it's not intended to be a stormwater pond, correct? It's intended to later be additional homes?
The only purpose I have for that currently, which is part of the red box design currently, we do have a pond there. So we have the existing pond that was abandoned or breached, and that's now got wetlands and streams. So we are putting another basin there. So the only use we have planned for the project and our designs currently is for stormwater management. I can't say that it would never have a home, because obviously, it's acreage that's zoned. But there's a water, there's a twelve-inch water line crossing the property, there's two streams crossing the property, there's wetlands and a new stormwater basin. So practically speaking, I don't know that it would be, but I can't say that it couldn't be.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
No, sir.
I do have a question. What is the probability, in your opinion? Okay? And don't look back at Robert when you give me the answer on this. What is the probability, in your opinion, because you made a comment similar to that at a community meeting, I believe, back in May, to put all eighty-six homes on that lot?
It's.
Because you haven't done anything yet. You haven't cleared the area?
It's not usually, usually the concept plans are the pie in the sky.
I understand.
It is probably not likely, if I'm getting scals, that we can get.
It ain't gonna bother you, I'm here with you.
We will do all we can, obviously, to get, to get the density, but there are, there are details, you know? Much like we talked about, if we have a steep road section and sixty-two, you know, if there's a particular home style that the market wants, that we're showing sixty-two-foot lot widths that don't work on a steep slope, then we're gonna, fortunately, it's not my decision.
I understand, I understand.
So if we don't have eighty-six lots, it's probably gonna be market-driven. The stormwater could affect it. I don't expect it will, because largely, that residual piece is where, we kind of talked about, the middle, the middle part of the site drainage is kind of being taken care of, going to the existing neighborhood. The eastern part, majority of that's being diverted to the west. So most of my stormwater is heading to the west section. So there could be a small facility to the east that might still be needed. I think with our layout, that that would be behind the homes. But it could affect us, for sure. So not likely to make a long way to say.
I appreciate your honesty. Now, let me say this. Isn't it, I'm gonna ask this question, I don't want an answer. This is a rhetorical question. Isn't it interesting how for twenty-five years, well, almost twenty-five years, I guess, that this piece of property has sit there and never been dealt with, even after the sixty-five proffer was put on in two thousand and five? I just ask that question rhetorically, because it has become ingrained in the community to enjoy what is there now as it is now. And it makes you wonder why someone sits on an asset like that. Now, I know there was some tough times on economics for a couple of years, but I just ask that question, I don't expect an answer. So thank you, that's all I have.
I have an answer to that.
What's that?
I do have an answer to that.
Well, I think I know what your answer is. I just said it was probably because of the economy. Now, what do you have to add to that?
Well, no, it's.
If you want to come up to the podium so people at home can hear you. Because I think this is televised.
Yeah. It has more to do with my uncle and his partner's estate. They, they had other things they were.
Other things.
Doing, and it, I think it had less to do with the economy, believe it or not, which you'd think it would. It had more to do with, they finally got to wanting to sell it.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's fair. Thank you, appreciate it. That's all I have from Bobby. Anyone else? If not, who else needs to speak to us tonight? Nobody else for the petitioner? Okay. At this time, then, let's move on to the public hearing. We have so far four people signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that plans to speak tonight that hasn't signed up? If you have not signed up to speak, would you please come up to see the clerk and fill out the form, so when your time comes, I can call you up, please?
Sir.
You're welcome.
You heard just four.
Yeah, I heard four. Which is to say, if anyone speaks on something and the person next is gonna speak on the same thing, you don't have to repeat, repeat it, just summarize it, if you will. Because I think, I was at the planning commission meeting, I heard everything and I read everything. And we want to hear from those that wish to speak tonight. So while that's going on, we appreciate all who've come. I'm gonna first of all, open the public hearing, and then I'm gonna say that we appreciate all who've come to address the board today. When your name is called, please come forward and state your name and address prior to sharing any comments. And make sure you adjust the mic there, so we can hear you. Each person is permitted to speak for up to three minutes. We got a running clock over here, and either Madeline or Rhonda's gonna turn the clock on, and I can see it, and you also can see it up front there, when you're speaking at the dius or podium. And when that light system tells you how much time you have remaining, keep that in mind. When the light changes from green to yellow, meaning caution, please share any concluding remarks. When the light changes from yellow to red, your time has ended. While the board desires to hear from all who desire to speak, we ask that speakers refrain from repeating comments already made by others. And when you get to three minutes now, I'm gonna give you about fifteen seconds, and then I'm gonna call you, call you on, I'm gonna call you on it. So otherwise, we'd be here till eleven o'clock, and I don't think y'all want to be here till eleven o'clock again, like the last group. So at this time, the public hearing is open, and our first speaker is Daniel Callahan. Daniel, if you could come up, please?
Actually, Patrick is what I go by, Daniel Patrick Callahan, six-one-one-six Morning Glory Drive, where I live with my wife and our two children. Any day now, we'll be welcoming our third child. I hope you'll bear with everyone here today, we've listened to them for forty-five minutes. There was a lot of folks from the neighborhood here for over five hours last time. For us, the way this development occurs has a material impact on our ability to safely enjoy our community. For us, this is about kids being able to ride their bikes safely on Crumpacker Drive, our neighbors being able to take a morning walk without fear of being run over from a vehicle coming down the hill. For us, it's about our vested property rights, and it's about ensuring future development is in conformity with the existing neighborhood. But this is also about protecting the unique beauty of the Reed Mountain Preserve, so that residents of the county can continue to enjoy it, and visitors as well. As the chairman has said in the past, it's about protecting the county's crown jewel and reaping the economic development that comes with it. And I'll refer you to my written comments if you need to look at that quote. I hope I didn't misquote him, but that's from the Roanoke Times. So our general view is that this warrants full study and vetting before this step is taken, and we're not there yet. Everyone here today accepts that the development of this parcel will occur, and when it does, we'll welcome those folks to the community. We simply ask that the law that's been on the books for twenty years, the ordinance that added the R-1C designation, and upon which we all relied when choosing to live in this neighborhood, be the law that dictates how such development will occur in the future. This isn't a new neighborhood where a builder could plop down a hundred homes and create a standalone community. This is one neighborhood, the Samuel's Gate Community, one road in and out, Crumpacker Drive, one HOA. The only other neighbors these folks will have are the bear, the deer, the raccoons, the skunks, the birds, all the wildlife in the preserve. The existing homes in this community are vastly different from what the developer hopes to build. The lots are a third to a half an acre, not the point-one-six acre lots that would be allowed if the petition's approved. The terrain is sloped and sits directly above everyone else's homes. All runoff and erosion will flow downhill to our properties. The two hundred-plus new vehicles rolling down the hill will all go right by our homes. There's no sidewalks in our neighborhood. The developer says, don't worry, trust us, we'll follow the regulations. Respectfully, the developer's not entitled to deference or trust. No one's under oath here today. And Mr. Fraylon stood in front of this board, as well as the planning commission, and said there's five or six different ways off of this parcel. That's just not true. That's just not true. You can look at the map and see that. There's one road in and out of the neighborhood. They said there won't be any traffic issues, but they rely on studies from twenty years ago, and they fail to take into account the traffic to and from the preserve's only parking lot, which sits at the top of our neighborhood and right next to this parcel. With the Supreme Court's recent ruling throwing out judicial deference for administrative rulemaking, regulations also matter less today than they did a few weeks ago. What does matter to us and to everyone who enjoys the preserve is the law that this body saw fit to enact twenty years ago when it placed the R-1C designation on this property. That law was in the public interest then, it's in the public interest now. We ask that you protect our vested property rights, avoid creating a substantial detriment to our community. We ask that you protect the county's crown jewel. We ask that you reject the petition. I would also point out that some of the requirements for amending the ordinance don't appear to have been appropriately addressed here. Conservation of properties and their values, conservation of natural resources, encouragement of the most appropriate use of land throughout the locality, and the general welfare of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker tonight is Ken Foose. Is that correct, Ken? Come on up.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Ken Foose, six-one-zero-four Morning Glory Drive. So I'm not gonna go over, but again, summarizing, same points as he had as far as family, quality of life, traffic, and some of those concerns. I know one of the biggest concerns that I would like to point out is the stormwater runoff. And even tonight, there's, it was only initially mentioned about the sheet runoff and the eastern runoff initially, and then all of a sudden, they started talking about, oh, yeah, and then there's the western runoff. I'd like to point out that if you had kind of walked up there, you saw that little footbridge that was there on the gravel path that goes over towards the Greggin Drive. That was put there because it used to be raging water down there the first couple of years I lived here. And I've been living here for about four and a half years now. And that bridge was kind of necessary to cross over that, especially if you had kids or older people that were going, or kids on bicycles, which happens a lot. But now, there's not a lot of water coming down, because they clear-cut the whole area up on the side of the slope. So it's more sheet runoff. As these building, as these homes are built and the neighborhood's built up, they've even stated at the end, it seemed to be kind of underrepresented for the concern that, you know, what they're gonna do should improve the runoff, but hope is not a plan. And they keep referring to the off-site. Well, that off-site runs right past a couple of homes that in the planning commission meeting, you'll remember, were referred to at, in over twenty years, and two thousand homes, there was only one time in Roanoke County that he was not able to resolve a stormwater runoff issue. That is right where that western runoff starts to run past the bottom of where Crumpacker and Morning Glory meet, and on the West Area Place Court. And we are supposed to put our faith in the fact that there are ordinances in place to protect us, and that everything will be done in accordance with those ordinances. I spent twenty years in the Navy, and you live and die by rules, regulations, and ordinances. But they are only as good as the integrity of those that are executing them. And we, some of us do not have that experience so far. When I first bought the house, I was even, I was ghosted during the process. I eventually had to call a meeting, thinking I might have to back out of the deal, and was basically told, I probably don't have a good employer to do that. I had to wait until they were building the house across the street to catch the person that was supposed to address the issues for the first year after I purchased it for warranty issues. So I don't have a lot of faith, and as was mentioned, right, no one is under oath here. We should not be given the benefit of the doubt. If they're supposed to follow those ordinances and we're supposed to have faith in it, the history is not showing us that that faith can be honored. And I see this kind of running out. So I would recommend to reject the proffer, because I don't see what the real advantage of lifting this proffer is gonna be, based on the types of homes they're gonna be building, topography challenges that they're gonna face, not an adequate explanation of where the western runoff is gonna go. And it seems like they're working on doing quantity over quality. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Alan McPherson. Mr. McPherson? We're not gonna keep you here too late tonight, so you can make your golf tea time tomorrow.
Appreciate that, appreciate that. So I'm Alan McPherson. I live at fifty-nine-eleven Windcrest Lane, Roanoke. So Windcrest is kind of a semicircular drive, sits kind of south of Crumpacker there. We moved there in nineteen ninety-five. We were the third family to move into the subdivision. So I'm up here to kind of hopefully help give a little historical perspective of what that area looked like then when we moved in, and, and some of the concerns that, that many of us have expressed and have about this additional subdivision that's going in above. So I was at the two thousand and five meeting when, when the zoning decision was made. And the concerns are identical to what's been expressed at the commission meeting and here tonight at that time. And so the decision was made that they were gonna go ahead and zone it as, as they did, kind of over those concerns, which were traffic, stormwater, visual, visual impacts. And those concerns still exist, and they're even stronger now, when you, when you look at the property and you look at that development. In the stormwater, there's one thing I'm not too clear, which was the eastern drainage. I'm thinking that that goes down the existing stormwater system that lies between Samuel's Gate and Cortland, right below Crumpacker. That particular, just for perspective, that particular drainage had to be drastically improved in the early two thousands, because it was, I believe, because it was inadequate. Lot of money, and both, I think, private HOA money, I know HOA money, because we had to spend some HOA money on that. And I don't know if there was public money involved in that, too. But that to say that stormwater management is based on science and experience, and so that's how the regulations are brought in. And so it's, it's not static. And so we don't necessarily know what's gonna happen, and you have construction phase in these developments that can produce a lot of runoff and bad runoff. Anyway, so that drainage had to be quite, improved quite a bit over what was in in nineteen ninety-five. And so that's just a little bit of information along those lines. I would encourage you to, to reject the petition, based on what you've heard tonight. And I would, I would suggest that you err on the conservative side, stick with the sixty-five units, don't jump to the eighty-six, which is squeezing twenty-one more units in, many of them narrow, many of them steep, more roofs, more asphalt, more heat, more visual impact. Stick with the sixty-five, I would suggest.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Patricia Dell. Is that correct?
Yes. I'm gonna have to interpret my chicken scratch, so I apologize. My name is Patricia Dell. I live at five-five-nine-eight Hunt Ridge Road, so I live right on the main road that people use. And I will try to use my three minutes, just to bring up three main points of concern. I'm a physician in the area, I have two young children. My husband is a police officer in the area. We love this community. I walk it. I walked it every day when I was pregnant, I run it, I go up Reed Mountain all the time. So I'm very familiar, whenever there's a house or something, I'm very familiar with the community and what's going on. My first concern is environmental. So, you know, I am not sure whether an environmental impact survey is required for any of the plots. But I think that, given it is close to Reed Mountain, one of my questions is, has an environmental impact survey been done by Fraylon? If yes, then, you know, we would like to have it publicly available. If it has not been done, my question is, why not? You know, this is, the plan is to be right next to a nature preserve, so this will have an impact on the ecosystem in that area. With that said, I do hike up there all the time, so this will dramatically change the views that people come to Reed Mountain for, and this will also change the way it looks when you're looking at it. So it will affect kind of the beauty of Roanoke County. So that is another concern I have, environmental-wise. I am originally from Northern Virginia, it is overdeveloped, and, you know, I often sought out the nature in that area, and that's one of the reasons I moved down here, and I think that the community expects that and appreciates that, and it's, you know, yes, it is kind of ingrained, that, you know, we appreciate that area, especially since it's, you know, right up there near Reed Mountain. One of the other concerns I have is the increased traffic. I do live on Hunt Ridge Road, so I am very familiar, day and night, of how much traffic goes through the area. We live very close to the apartment buildings that are being built and the townhomes, we have concerns about traffic there, but this will continue to add traffic. There really is not six ways in. There's Hillview, and there's Hunt Ridge, and most people take Hunt Ridge. So, I do have concerns about increased traffic in the area, pedestrian safety, this is a very pedestrian neighborhood, a lot of people walk, and so, you know, trying to make the streets the size that BDOT requires, not what they are within the existing neighborhood, would also present more safety issues. My last concern is the, you know, I do have children that will be going to the school there. I am a former eighth grade and high school teacher from Louisiana, but my concerns are the increase in student overflow. There's already going to be an overflow with the apartments and the townhomes planned. I don't know what the plan was to address that, but I do have concerns for furthermore increase in student traffic. Now, of course, we welcome all students to the school, but I think that there do need to be plans to address that, so that we don't have children in trailers learning, we don't have a teacher shortage, we don't have a higher student-to-teacher ratio than necessary for Roanoke County. So, those are my three concerns, and I am out of time now, so I appreciate it, and I do ask that you please reject the petition to increase the proffer from 65 to, what was it, 86 units. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, Darren Skilling.
I'm Darren Skilling. I reside at 6143 Morning Glory Drive there in the subdivision. And one thing I did want to provide to the group is the petition that one of our neighbors, Ally, had put together online, there were 211 signatures opposing the increase of 21 houses. And then, the one thing that I wanted to bring up, I wasn't at the 2005 meeting, but I was thinking that when Fraylin and Waldron donated all that land for the preserve, which we all love, that would have been the perfect time to get an R1 without conditions approval. They just gave all this money to the county, they just gave all this land. So, there had to be a good reason that nobody can remember, nobody has documented, Mr. North did notice that watershed was one of the items on the meeting notes. But that would have been the perfect time to get R1. So, why R1C? So, that's one of my concerns, is why should we go up 21 houses when originally, when they donated and were so generous, that we only went R1C? One of the other things I wanted to point out is the housing concerns, and we need more housing in the valley. Do we need that much more housing up off of Crumpacker? Right now, there are two houses on Crumpacker that have been up for sale for, I'm guesstimating, I didn't pull numbers on this, four to six weeks that haven't sold, and they're still for sale. There's one, there's two on Hunt Ridge coming up the same egress, or the same inlet to the area that are still up for sale also, those have not sold. There are plenty others that have sold, and sold very quickly. The house we purchased three years ago sold quickly, and so, I just wanted to point out there are those four houses that are for sale, that are on the market. One thing that Mrs. Shepherd brought up was the stormwater retention. I drive down, I'm on Morning Glory, I drive up Crumpacker, and I hang that left every day. And there is a berm, like, it would be a stormwater retention, and there is a spot for maybe houses, we have the same concern, where will that stormwater go, and is that where it's going to go? And that lot is above all the houses down in Wisteria Place. They're not below, so if that's a stormwater retention pond, does that have the capability of going into our area? So, those are the, those are some of the ideas and points I wanted to make out. And then also, the six means of egress, there are really four, if you take different roads coming out, and I can point that out on the map if you wanted to see the four that I was looking at. So, I would say that I am against adding the 21 houses. The other houses that are going to go there, we do know they're going to go there, and they're already approved, so we're okay with that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Should I give this petition to?
You may give it to.
This is online also.
Sure. Yeah, I've noticed that it increased from 150, I think, to that number now.
Yeah, and Ally couldn't make it tonight, she wanted to be here, so she asked me to bring that in for her.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, next, last speaker so far, Gerald Swanson. Gerald?
I want to talk about Gregan, I promise you.
What's that?
I want to talk about Gregan, I'll talk about history.
Okay.
Mr. Fraylin said that y'all are welcome, I guess he meant y'all were welcome, because I went out there, somebody emailed me on, or put Facebook about this thing, I went out there, except for a half an hour, ringing, banging on the door, nobody came to the door. Finally, a lady came out to give him a message. Can I ask you about the Crumpacker thing? Oh, I'll send somebody out here. 50 minutes, an accountant came, and I said, I don't know what you're talking about. I said, well, okay. He talked to me about 20 minutes. So, I said, he said, I suggest you call, call back out there. They answered, hello, not Fraylin, our Fraylin Homes, hello, is this our Fraylin home? Yeah, what do you want? I talked to somebody about Crumpacker. Oh, I'll give somebody a call back. A week later, I called back, oh, we don't know anything about them. We haven't decided what we're going to do. I bought a house from his uncle, Mr. Fraylin, went to Fraylin's office to draw up the plans. He gave me a thing, we know to draw plans, to do the plans. I said, I got the house, house, here's the house. Oh, we're sorry. What, that's house, well, I ordered you to get the wrong thing, we'll fill in your house, on your lot. So, do they get a reduction in the price? Oh, no. Put a house here. Well, we draw, this, yours is the first big buy I live in Summerfield, we don't know what we're going to put in there. It just barely fit on the lot. Then, as we're building it, and telling you knows probably, I was taking engineering subjects, I took the plan and crawl, and I said, I thought the perfectly, I'm between the builder and the people, I said, this wall, it shifted this way three feet, we'll fix it. When he got fixed, the walkthrough, final walkthrough before he bought, closed on the house. So, he had to tear it down, move it over, so I had all this dust on my carpet. So, I know this is not him, but he's buying it from his uncle. And I'm not trying to talk about today, I'm just talking about, and I'm not going to pay $450,000, $500,000, $600,000 for a 65-foot light lot, $150,000, which is probably $70,000, that's what it's going to be. I mean, I don't know whether he would, I mean, I'm not asking you, Tammy, but you know what I'm talking about. Those people want like $600,000, they want an acre, I got acre lot, because I moved in two years, I kept, as I said, I kept fixing stuff that shouldn't fix when it's built, for Fraylin and Waldron. So, two years later, I moved across the street to, now it's Trent. I backed up to Cowpastures, got an acre and a half lot. So, I just, I have nothing against these people, but these people, they said 4,000 cars, I own 4,000 cars coming down my street, and the street to Talbot is Cortland, which is probably 60-foot wide, it's a wide street. Most people come out, this is, I think, the thing, come out Hunt Ridge to go to run. So, that's all I had to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I won't bother you at church anymore.
Okay, is anyone else that hadn't signed up wishes to speak? That being said, we will now close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
In the apartments you're building?
Yes.
How many apartments are going to be in that compound, or?
I wanted to make sure it wasn't 86, we're building 84 now, and that's all market-driven, so they're projected to lease very well. The acreage would dictate the total amount of units, which is really dictated by the market.
So, potentially, what is the most that it could end up being?
Well, Bobby could probably address that better, so how many, it's 10 acres, correct? I don't, I think it would be about 180 at the most. I think that's probably what it would be.
So, how many buildings is that?
Seven? Seven to nine? Sorry, I don't have a more clear answer. We just are stopping at the 84 for now, that's a lot for us, and we're just going to lease that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody, you're welcome. Anyone else got a question? Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask, is there a motion? And I'm going to answer, yes, there is. In June of 2005, the Planning Commission, Holland's Planning Commissioner Gary Gerald, made a statement that he was sympathetic to citizens' concerns regarding stormwater management. That said, he made a motion to proffer 65 homes consistent with the concept plan, and it passed 4 to nothing. Later that month, in June of 2005, the Board of Supervisors, including Holland Supervisor Richard Flora, agreed, and the Board of Supervisors voted 5-0 to affirm 65 homes in conformance to the concept plan. I believe acreage at that time was about .68 acres per lot on the average for those 65 homes. Today, we have been asked to remove the 65-home proffer on July 2, 2024, and the Planning Commission voted 5-0 to limit the area to 86 homes based on plans submitted for the 50 acres. Earlier this year, in May 13 of 2024, a community meeting was held at Bonsec Elementary, citizens visited the plans and spoke about stormwater concerns, traffic, school capacity, speeding, fire and rescue services, some 24 citizens, and nine submitted comments from that meeting. Several citizens living in the area told me that they would consider buying homes with that great view up there if the acreage stayed the same on the average, and not smaller lots like they have today nearby, living in Samuel's Gate and in another subdivision just off Crumpacker. Stormwater runoff and lot drainage are still concerning today as they were in 2005. Some 11 people spoke or expressed that in comments in the meeting package. Other concerns were traffic. Fact, four ways into Crumpacker, but only one way out from Crumpacker and the 50-acre site. A gentleman had just alluded to it, that lives on Morning Glory, I agree with that statement. Fact, on the school situation, I spoke personally to supervisor nicely, and he says Bonsec has plenty of capacity. Speed, fact, at my request, the Roanoke County Police Department put a speed board up, collected data on 3,723 vehicles over 11 days. The data showed an average speed of 25.91 miles per hour in a 25 miles per hour posted zone. Over 25 miles per hour accounted for 1.4% or 52 people out of 3,723 vehicles. Fire and rescue, fact, a new station, 12, will serve the area beginning in January 2025, increasing response times to save our citizens or to serve our citizens. The increase will be from six minutes average response time to three. All total, between May's community meeting and July 2, Planning Commission meeting, some 64 citizens attended and 22 spoke or provided written comments, and a petition at the Planning Commission of 150 signatures was provided opposing expanding the 65-home proffer. In total, 163 citizens either spoke or signed the petition on not removing the 65-home proffer to minimize impact on the community. Others have expressed concerns on stormwater and lot drainage. Now, today, we just presented 211 signatures, which was an increase from the 150 before, and I had so noted that on social media. We are elected to listen to our citizens, all five of us sitting up here. Moreover, previous boards have affirmed 65 homes as proffered, the votes were unanimous. All the level good lots are just about spoken for, almost in Roanoke County, and some almost completed construction. About 15 of the lots on the 50 acres show .2 acres or less, very intense. In addition, elevation increases of 30% from below Crumpacker to the top ridge of the 50-acre site exist. I've walked that property five different times, with five different people, and all these supervisors as well. That said, we have challenging topography that remains in most of the county, as well as on these 50 acres. Lot drainage and steep slopes are ongoing concerns, along with excavation challenges and cost, and take up an enormous amount of our staff's time having to make sure these aren't here too. Coupled with having heard all the concerns from all the citizens who spoke at the Planning Commission that I attended as well as tonight, and reading all the comments that are presented in this package, I find that the proposed rezoning request from R1C with 65 homes to 86 homes is, one, inconsistent with good zoning practice, and will result in substantial detriment to this community. I therefore move that we deny the rezoning request as it has been requested. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes. I can't help it, Mr. Chairman.
You never could.
I never could. I took a bunch of notes, and as Mr. North indicated.
Chairman North, I do apologize, I believe we need a second before discussion on the motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Now, is there any discussion on the motion?
Thank you. Mr. North and I went out and hiked a portion of the property, it was last month, wasn't it?
No, it was earlier this month, I think.
Early July, anyway, walked on a portion of the property.
After the Planning Commission.
I'm not a builder, I tend to rely on my colleague, Mr. Radford. The topography, to me, is very challenging. I don't know how you get 86, I don't know how you get 65 houses up there, let alone 86. The topography's a problem. The difficulty I have is, number one, the Planning Commission has recommended approval, and it's, there are many times I've voted differently than what our Planning Commission has recommended, but I try to take their recommendations seriously. I think the views up there are absolutely gorgeous, everybody who lives there, I think it's beautiful. This area is consistent with the Neighborhood Conservation Future Land Use Plan, and a couple of years ago, this board did pay for and was part of a housing study, and the housing study indicates in Roanoke County, we need more houses. When I first saw this application come forward, I kind of scratched my head and figured out what's the problem, because with an R1 zoning district served by public water and public sewer, you can go down to 7,200 square feet on a parcel. And when I do my simple math, when I divide 50.8 acres by 86 lots, that's 0.59, that's half an acre, and that's pretty good. So, initially, my thought was to vote in favor of this application, but when I walked the property with Mr. North, and I saw some of the problems, I saw the steepness and the, sort of the hills and the dales and the gullies, I kind of struggled with how that would be able to be developed to that degree of density. I started changing my mind, so then I went back and I went and looked at what the Code of Virginia requires us to do when we look at these kind of questions. And if we want to approve an application, it should be consistent with our comprehensive plan, and it should be good zoning practice, and it should not result in substantial detriment to the community. And that's where I get hung up, because I tend to think this would be substantial detriment to the neighborhood next door. And that's where I have to balance those two different competing standards. And so, with that, fellow board members, I think I would support the motion to deny. It's very hard for me, because when I'm at a half acre for every lot, that sounds pretty good, and we have a need in Roanoke County. But I do struggle with the idea that this will result in a substantial detriment to the community. the community. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be quiet.
Thank you for your comments.
I want to make a comment. As much as I would love to see additional homes being built, because that is how I earn my living, I do have to say that with the citizens and the apartments going up, the amount of traffic that the apartments are going to bring, as well as the new houses, I can understand all the citizens being worried about the amount of traffic coming and going with the inclusion of the apartments, with the inclusion of the additional townhomes and everything that are being built down there. So that is my reasoning behind seconding the motion is more, again, we are elected to represent the citizens in this, and I hear what they're saying, and I understand their concerns with all the traffic, and knowing that the folks right on Crumpacker purchase their homes and right behind them, if you take two homes, put together two neighboring homes, you could potentially have three homes right behind those two homes. I understand their concerns, so I just wanted to explain my reasoning behind it and why I second it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll just make a real quick comment. I appreciated Mr. North's effort to get all of us to the property and to see the challenges and the beauty of the property, and I really appreciate it. I reflected on what was said about the walking path and the little bridge. I went over that little bridge. We saw that, and we saw that it was completely dry at that time, but we've been going through a drought up to that point, and so I feel like there is consequence for that kind of density on that kind of slope, and to the point that Mr. Mahoney was making, the detriment to the community, I feel like there is. I think that sixty-five houses are inevitable. I think that they are going to come, but I don't want to see the eighty-six. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Yeah, thank you. So let me, I'm probably going to run counter to you guys. We need housing. It's a national concern. I walked the property too with Mr. North on Sunday. What a beautiful piece of land. You know, I'm not sure you can, you're going to notice twenty-one additional lots on top of the sixty-five, and that's my opinion. I've developed lots of land. If this was, if you didn't take topography in based on the fifty acres, they could max out at three-hundred-and-two lots, so we're talking sixty-five, eighty-six. So it's a national issue with getting affordable housing. In oh-five, the dream was to have housing of the same cost or the same value as what's going to go in there now. Well, site work cost has gone up, building cost has gone up, stormwater regulations, somebody made a comment that they don't have any faith in the government and stormwater. Well, I wish you'd tell all those people that I'm, I have to build stuff for, because we have to put the water underground, and then we have to release it at a slower rate than what we accumulate. So that's all built into the regs. I feel confident of the engineer that, he's not here now, I feel confident the engineer can figure, okay, I didn't say him. Okay, he's hiding behind there.
For good reason.
Yeah, yeah, I feel good that he's going to get that under control. We've got checks and balances in the development review process. I'm just, we need housing, and by, you know, credit to Mr. Fraylin, an engineer trying to find a way to address that in some form or fashion. You know, when I was asking those questions earlier about the topography and how close he had those lots, you know, I was trying to drill in to see, okay, have you really taken an in-depth look? And he did. He said he does have it. We just haven't seen those drawings, so, you know, I wouldn't risk doing the rezoning if I didn't have that information with me, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I'll just comment that, yes, it was me who asked the Roanoke Valley Alligating Regional Commission, as a member of that body, to do a housing study. One was done. We need more housing, but I got to tell you, we're not Eastern Virginia. We are a challenged area with slopes and views that I wouldn't train for anyplace else in the state of Virginia. You got to do it right. You got to do it right, and you got to do it right. And I'm going to say something tonight, because I was involved with this. I could hardly drive along Hunt Bridge last week because there was traffic on both sides, and I didn't know whether I was going to miss something on the left or right. I will tell you this: if I run through there one more time, I will be calling the Roanoke County Police Department and Tarek Manieri and our development. I am not going to stand for one-lane traffic on a two-lane road that should not have congestion irrespective of constructions that's taking place, and that's exactly what I've run into and others have as well. So my message today is do it right, do it right, and do it right. And if those are your subcontractors, then get someone to convey the message to them. We will not tolerate that. It is a safety issue that is not going to be standing in my district, nor would it be in anybody else's district. So let's get that under control. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
No.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Thank you, and this body will stand in adjournment for five minutes before we move on. Thank you.
Sure.[1002.56]
Okay, moving on to item two. The petition of Trail Development Group LLC to rezone approximately nine point six seven acres from I one, low intensity industrial district to C two, high intensity commercial district located near thirty four seventy five and thirty eight oh one Challenger Avenue in the Vinton Magisterial District. Philip Thompson, Director of Planning for the second reading and public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you mentioned, this is a rezoning from industrial to commercial. The property is located along the Route four sixty Challenger Avenue corridor. It sits behind the Bank of Bonita and gas station at Exxon close proximity to where Chick-fil-A is. Again, this property has been zoned industrial for quite a while. By the way, it is near thirty four seventy five and thirty eight oh one Challenger Avenue. It's nine point six seven acres, currently vacant. So they're requesting to rezone from I one to C two. So they're proposing a development that contains a variety of different uses. So general restaurant, commercial outdoor sports and recreation, commercial indoor sports and recreation, and commercial indoor amusement. So all those uses are by right uses in the C two district therefore that's why they're rezoning to C two. Couple photographs. This is, there is a stub road that comes out and this is where the property, you can see it from that stub road into the site. Again, it's fairly flat for most of it. It does have some trees and some topography on the southwestern property line. But again, a little bit about the property. It operated as a drive-in movie theater from the mid fifties through nineteen eighty five. It was rezoned in March of eighty seven from residential estate and B two, general commercial, and B three, special commercial district to M one, obviously in ninety two when, with conditions, and then when the orders came into play in nineteen ninety two and from M one to I one. Res zoning spanned multiple parcels for developing a retail office fuel storage complex, commercial road frontage, and light industrial park. This nine acre tract remained zoned I one C and has never been developed since that time. It was rezoned in ninety four to remove the proffer condition. So it went from I one C to I one. And so now what they're proposing is go from I one to C two. Again, the list of the uses, I'm not going to read all definitions, they're in your board report. They are looking at uses in the facility that four different types of land uses, general restaurant, commercial indoor sports and recreation, commercial indoor sports and recreation, and commercial indoor amusement. Again, all those are allowed by right in the C two zoning district. As part of, you know, we recently adopted Route four sixty land use connectivity study and part of that was to provide connections off of four sixty to have traffic. So the applicant has been working closely with our transportation staff of incorporating some components of that into their concept plans so those extensions could happen in the future if need be. So here's kind of, there's a couple of concept plans and building layout plans that will go through. So as part of this, they did a traffic study. One of the things they're looking at doing is putting a future turn lane there off of a right turn lane into the site. Obviously, there's a median, so you can't make a left coming out of the site, so you have to make a right coming out. Currently, there's a cul-de-sac, a temporary cul-de-sac as part of, that's been dedicated. They're looking to remove that and eventually just put a T turnaround to be able to develop the site. And obviously, they'll have to go through the approvals to do that. If you look at the overall site, again, new facility would be approximately thirty feet tall, the building with a footprint of twenty two thousand nine hundred square feet and a total building area of forty thousand eight hundred square feet, hundred and sixty one parking spaces. You know, behind the building, there are outdoor areas for mini golf, cornhole, and pickleball. Outdoor shelters are shown with seating as well as a stage with support services. The application states that directional lighting and audio systems would be utilized to minimize impact on neighboring properties and be pointed away from those properties. Kind of look at the first floor building plan. This level contains a restaurant, a bar, bowling alleys, an arcade, bathrooms, and two community rooms. The restaurant and bar area, areas would be both open to the outside patio area as well. Second floor has darts, there's a bar, darts, cornhole, pickleball, and ax throwing. Again, there is seating on the interior as well as exterior deck for the bar area as well. Couple of concept renderings that are in the application. The outside or the front of the building, this is what the back of the building is proposed to look at of the rendering that they propose. Some of the interior of that as well. I think they have more renderings in the actual application that you can look at. Again, it is I one. If you look around to the north is C two, to the east is C two, C and I one, to the south is R four, C and I one, and then west is R four, C and C two. So kind of a mixture of commercial, some industrial, and high density residential as well. So it is principal industrial. It's been industrial for a while. So while it's not consistent with the principal industrial, future land use, the rezoning is more consistent with core, which does a but to property as well. And so again, that's where a lot of our commercial areas are along Route four sixty. So it's on that, it borders that core development. Public hearing, again, the planning commission held that on July second. There were four citizens who spoke. One was in support of the project while the others had questions or concerns. Their concerns included ensuring the buffer along the southern property line adjacent to the Evington at Bondsec Development, which this will keep that buffer and that topography in place. The traffic turning right out of development onto Challenger Avenue and having to make a U-turn at West Ruethen, as there are many accidents there. I think as all of you are aware, there are several projects proposed on Route four sixty to deal with the operational capacity of Route four sixty. And then potential noise from concerts at the venue as well is one of the other concerns. I think the applicant will talk about some of the technology that they're going to employ as part of that as well. So the planning commission discussed the current zoning, what uses were permitted in C two, history of the parcel, similar facilities operated by the applicant in other areas of Virginia, the applicant incorporating the Route four sixty land use connectivity study recommendations into the design, overflow parking, which would allow for the extension of the road as part of the Route four sixty land use connectivity study, the proposed turn lane on Route four sixty, and they also talked about water and sewer and stormwater Majority of business would take place on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It talks about, at the time, there was no proffer conditions. They did talk about a potential proffer condition offered by the applicant of the site plan performance, which you should have a copy of that proffer condition in the revised site plan. The buffer adjacent to Evington at Bondsec not being disturbed, the Route four sixty improvement projects, the stage will project sound towards the building and the way from neighboring properties, again, surrounding zoning and land use and in the future land use designation. So the planning commission recommends approval of the rezoning based on the applicant giving the property owner to agree to the following proffer condition, which they have, which is, at the time the site is developed, the site shall be developed in substantial performance with the concept plan prepared by Mattern and Craig, dated April twenty second, twenty twenty four, and revised July fifth, twenty twenty four, subject to any changes required during the conference of site plan review process. With that, I'll take any questions you have.
Any questions, Mr. Thompson?
Two questions. And I'm not sure, Philip, if this were you or for Mr. Lubek. When I read the staff report that talked about the cul-de-sac at the end of the unnamed street, assuming that the board approves this application, I think they will, will we have to then come forward with an ordinance to abandon part of that so that the applicant can build what he wants to build? Or is that something that would be done administratively? Because I know with some, in the past, we've had some ordinances that have come before the board where we had to vacate or abandon property. And I didn't know since this was dedicated to the county whether that would require a similar conforming action on our part.
So again, obviously, I think there's some more we'd look into it, but I do believe it was dedicated for public use to the board supervisors. So I do think if there is a reconfiguration of that, then yes, we would have to, there would be some action, future action that you would probably have to take as part of that.
I'm just afraid we would slow up the applicant's project for us to go through that process.
Well, if they're going through the site plan process, I think we can get through that pretty quickly.
Okay.
I also do think that with this use being the third use, right, that then that street would probably be brought into the state system. Okay? Currently, there's only two users off that, the Exxon station, the Bank of Bonita. Typically, you have to have three users or three people on the road for the state to take it in. So obviously, the turn lane, vacating that piece and then putting, there will be a new turnaround, right, that would have to be dedicated. I think all that would be, and then hopefully then getting VDOT to accept that into the state system would, we probably would want to do at some point as well.
My second question is more, not for his, but for our internal consistency. Would you see a need for us to maybe amend the future land use plan and put this more into core as opposed to principal industrial?
Yeah, as you know, we're trying to wrap up the two hundred plan, and I don't think we change it as part of that. You could all make that recommendation. One of our suggestions to you all is that we would do an annual review of the comp plan, and as part of that, we would suggest map amendments or changes. So whether it's done as part of the two hundred plan or whether at the first year in, that would be part of the thing as well. If you also notice, the Fraley and Waldron property that's off of Integrity is also zone C two, and it's designated principal industrial. So that probably also makes sense to make that one core too, because that was back when I first started. My first rezoning was the con rezoning when they were looking at having Home Depot there and another grocery store and what have you. So we would probably look at several properties that we probably wouldn't want to look at, but that would be one of the things that we'd look at.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
So can I just ask staff, and I may have missed it, you may have mentioned it, but did staff ever receive a valid proffer signed by the property owner?
Yeah, that should have been forwarded to you all.
Okay, I was just reading the staff report.
Yeah, so originally, it was not part of it, but it's, yes. So the applicant, as you are aware, you know, the owner has to sign the proffer statement. So they had to work with Old Dominion Freight Line, and we had several conversations after they were willing to do it, but obviously, the property owner had to be doing it. So we just got it Monday.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Thompson, I got a question. I know this was discussed at the planning commission, because I sat there and listened to this petition. It was discussed about the turn lane leaving the facility where the gas station is today, the Exxon and the Credit Union.
Thank you.
Yes.
When you come out, if you, let's say you came over from Vinton to go to this venue one night, and you've got to go home, so you go out and you turn right, but you're going to have to make an immediate move over to the left turn lane that turns towards West Ruethen and Chick-fil-A.
Correct.
What's, what's this, is there enough site distance there that nothing needs to be done on four sixty?
Yeah, I think there's enough site distance. I think also, you know, there is the proposed improvement that'll have the through cut between, you know, coming down where Chick-fil-A is, you couldn't go across the CVS, right? So again, what you're going to do, there's just a couple of things to do. I think there's enough site distance. The issue that you're going to also get is you'll probably have more green time on four sixty, which would give you more opportunities to make that turn as well.
Correct.
You know, they also could go down further if they don't have enough room to go and make the U-turn at the Kroger-Bondsec, you know, that's there, so.
Yeah, there are two options there.
Yeah.
And by the way, the VDOT's having their discussion on the four sixty quarter, August twenty.
Twenty second.
Twenty second?
Yeah, Thursday.
At Bondsec Elementary, yeah. Okay, that's all, thank you. All right, with that said, then, any representatives for the petitioners wish to speak at this time? Welcome.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. Thank you for having us before you tonight. My name is Mitchell Tyler, and I live at sixty five sixty Goodview Road, Goodview, Virginia. That is Bedford County, but I pay taxes in Roanoke County, I have two existing businesses here, okay, so.
We thank you.
Yes, of course, and I'd like to build a great big one here with you guys. So again, we're talking about the five four oh social restaurant and entertainment, and I'm one of the principals of the group here. We say Trail Development Group, but it's really our family. It sounds, it sounds better to say LLC at the end of it, but my brother, my father, and I, and our wives and our children are Trail Development Group, and many of them are here tonight with us to participate in these festivities. As you heard, we're requesting a rezoning from I one to C two. I'll skip some of the details that have already been covered in, in great length. I do think that it's worth noting that this was an entertainment facility in the fifties through the eighties, the trail drive-in, one that my father actually was a patron at many times, and accommodated up to seven hundred cars at its peak. It was sort of during the drive-in boom in the fifties. There were four or five that popped up in the Roanoke Valley all around that time, stretching from Salem all the way out towards Stewartsville and what was far Roanoke County at the time, way, way out there. So closed in nineteen eighty five, they held swap meets there for a few weekend, for weekends for a few years, and the land has been vacant since then. There really hasn't been a reason to consider this parcel as anything other than industrial just because that's how it has existed really for the measurable past. Quickly, our background. So we acquired Blue Ridge Ax throwing in twenty twenty. They were a tenant of ours in one of our buildings, and when the COVID shutdowns happened, they were sort of a startup, and they just asked simply if we let them out of their lease and then we could acquire the name and the ax throwing business. Didn't really know anything about ax throwing businesses, probably wouldn't have started it on my own, but it sort of fell into our lap. And so we started with hiring one person. I knew he was the guy because he came to the interview with his own ax. So he was the guy, all right? It started to take off, and we were able to develop the business. And of course, coming out of COVID, people were anxious to get out and be entertained again and participate with family and friends. As that was growing, we opened a location in downtown Blacksburg in twenty twenty one. It was a little too large for just ax throwing, so we went back to another love that my brother and I had growing up, which was arcades. And so we added some arcade games. Then that grew into a location in Harrisonburg, which got much bigger. So we went from a thousand square feet to thirty five hundred square feet to sixty five hundred square feet. We're currently getting ready to move our Blacksburg location to about eighty five hundred square feet in downtown Blacksburg. And as we've been now in the industry for the last four years, we've met lots of great people, including some just great consultants who can take visions and turn them into realities. And that's how we came up with this concept. And I'll talk a little bit about our group in a few minutes. We want to bring entertainment back home to the trail drive-in site with a high-quality casual dining restaurant in the Bondsec area, which constantly comes up. If you're not talking about traffic, you're talking about where we can eat in Bondsec. And so that's sort of one of the anchors of the facility. Serve the community and visitors alike with world-class facilities and attractions, indoor and outdoor pickleball, championship-style mini golf, a long area for family and friends to gather, arcade, ax throwing, darts, party rooms. We're taking things from a lot of different things. So the kind of experience you might have going to one of our local breweries and hanging out with family and friends, we can recreate part of that. But we also have other attractions that people can come and gather, from a small family, first date, anniversary, to three or four hundred people at a corporate holiday party. The I one permitted uses right now, there's some, some things that could go there that probably wouldn't fit the community as well as ours. Ours look pretty colorful compared to some of the industrial uses. And as many of you were either at the planning commission hearing or have heard since, the the big hiccup that we had was that we didn't offer any proffered conditions, and there were some concerns about all of the by right uses in C two, and we understood that, and we really don't have any intention of developing anything else there. And so it did take a little lifting because we're, the current owner is a publicly traded company with teams of lawyers and offices and all these people. So that's why the signed proffered condition came in yesterday, is not that we haven't been working on it, but that we've been working with a giant. We do anticipate this being a seven-day-a-week operation, creating around a hundred jobs. We have some management and creative director roles, of course, culinary staff, sales, and then lots of great jobs for all ages, part-time and full-time. This would be a fun first job or a great career that you could hopefully have with our family. Revenue generation for Roanoke County, sales and meals tax, real estate taxes, personal property taxes, and more. We think this would be an exciting addition to the Bondsec neighborhood, bringing life back to a vacant lot. It's mostly bordered by businesses, but there is a nearby residential area, and we've gone to great lengths with our site planners at Mattern and Craig to really help mitigate our impact on the residential area, especially the placement of the building, the placement of stage, parking, all those things have been with the residents in mind. We've also engaged with acoustic engineers to minimize the light and sound, light and noise impact on surrounding properties. There's also a great big mountain that separates our lot from the residential lots that are up there. We did have a question from the community during the public hearing about the tree line. You can see the, the tree line on top of the hill in this picture, and it was our intention to maintain those. In fact, it was a selling point for us that there was already a very large, thick natural vegetation and barrier. But we did update on the concept plan from July fifth, just a note that they were to As Mr. Thompson indicated, we have been working with VDOT and the county traffic and transportation departments. We've talked about the four sixty connectivity study, and we have adjusted, well, I wouldn't say adjusted, I would say we developed our concept plan with those future roadways in mind so that we were not blocking any of that. We also agreed to essentially give an easement for twenty five of the fifty feet that would be needed for connection road G, which would run parallel to four sixty. And so when we were looking at that, it would take buy-in from other business and property owners, but since we don't have anything developed yet, we were able to make that part of our, our plan. As mentioned, most of our business is off-peak hours outside of the AM PM traffic windows that are the most tense. The turn lane to be installed per VDOT standards does give people the ability to decelerate and get out of traffic quickly. There's currently a full width shoulder, but no turn lane there in front of the Exxon. When you exit the facility, you would be turning right. As I've left, it just depends on time of day whether I'm turning left immediately or doing a U-turn at the West Ruethen light or whether I'm going down to Valley Gateway Light at Kroger. So as, as mentioned, we would be in conformity with the C two zoning. There's already existing water and sewer mains and stormwater lines and electrical service already on the property, so very little impact on getting hooked up. We did have positive comments from emergency services, so we, you know, this doesn't tax the system beyond what they would expect for a facility like this. And then we did offer, we did update the application with the proffer at the request of the planning commission. So roots in the Roanoke Valley for our family back into the eighteen hundreds. We live, work, and play in the community here, and while my father, JR, and my brother Matthew and I see, oversee the, a lot of the concept and operations, we do, as, as many in the room can attest to, get a lot of feedback from our spouses on various items. And our children are our fun specialists, and so they've enjoyed as we've developed the arcades and chosen games, and they go to the conferences with us, and it's, it's really a fun industry to be a part of. And I'm wrapping up here, so we have a consulting firm, Turfway, who did our feasibility study. They've opened about a hundred and twenty facilities in the country over the last decade. The, the principle there goes all the way back to Chuck E. Cheese, and so he came up through a major entertainment corporation and now has his own consulting firm with, with teams that helped facilitate all the design all the way through opening. Mattern and Craig, respected local civil engineers, our architects are from Philadelphia, but we won't hold that against them because this is what they do, they build entertainment facilities. And we're in talks with several leading general contractors in the area who, who we would potentially want to partner with on this process. And I'll leave you with a little fresh view of summer mini golf here, which sometime in twenty twenty six, we could all be out there putting one day. So with that, happy to take any questions and answer them to the best of my ability.
Are those sand traps or they?
It's carpet, but they are sand traps, so this.
So I can get out of that one.
You could get out of this one. This is a picture I actually took. I was in Dallas and took a picture at a, at a facility that has some similarities, and I did not realize that people were bringing their own putters to this.
Yeah.
So you can go and have fun, but it's also, can be challenging and can be skill development. So I don't know that we'll have a pro shop, but we might have some pros show up from time to time.
I will bring my own putter.
Thank you.
Anyhow, okay, well, thank you very much. Any questions for the petitioners? I'll tell you what, this is, sounds like a lot of fun, and I know, I don't think there's a single person out there that would disagree that we need more places to go get a bite to eat. Now, this just adds a lot of added value if you want to be entertained or entertain household guests or whatever.
Yes, sir.
The only negative was the association with Philadelphia.
I know.
Eighty Eagles, but you know, what can I say?
We won't hang any banners.
You know, it's all right.
Is that in the proffer statement?
When he arrives, he would like to have the Washington team on. When he arrives, he would like to have the Washington team on.
Redskins.
Anyhow, no other comments. All right.
No, no, I appreciate the fact that he's worked closely with our transportation staff in terms of being prepared to lay out as part of the concept plan what we were looking at with the connectivity study just last year. Thank you. That's great.
He does it right, he does it right, he does it right. Now, that's the right way to do it. Dot the i's and cross the t's. That's great.
Yes.
Wow, okay. Thank you. At this time, we have anyone signed up? I'll open the public hearing. Anyone going once, twice? Anyone wish to speak that hadn't signed up? That being said, I will close the public hearing and at this time, is there a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the rezoning request. I feel that it is inconsistent with the future land use designation of principal industrial included in the county's adopted comprehensive plan, but it is consistent with the core of future land use designation of adjoining property and that the proposed commercial use is in line with adjacent properties currently zoned for commercial use. It is in good zoning practice and will not result in substantial detriment to the community. I therefore move that we approve the rezoning request with the following one proffer as it has been requested. At the time the site is developed, the site shall be developed in substantial conformance with the concept plan prepared by Mattern and Craig dated April 22nd, 2024, and revised July 5th, 2024, subject to any changes required during the comprehensive site plan review process.
Thank you, and I will second that. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah. Do we have the concept plan? I mean, is this it?
That's all I remember seeing.
That's all we got.
Is it, what's on the presentation? I mean, there's a couple of different ones that are floating around. So this one has the future right-of-way right on it? Okay. So I'm seeing April 22nd, 2024?
Right, this should be a revised date. So there's one in your application, there's one, there's probably two in your application, and there was one that should have been handed out with the proffer statement. The second one that's in, so they had an original one, then they came back and revised it, but it had the same date, didn't have a revision date. So we asked them to put the revision date on the one that they have with the proffer conditions, and that's what the revision date was. Because the other one, they had the same date, and therefore if you're referring to that date, anyway. So they updated that, which is the second concept plan you have in your packet. But anyway, it is the one that has the right-of-way. Okay, all right. And the easement on it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Anybody else? That being said, the clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Radford.
Ready to go play pickleball? Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes, thank you very much. Welcome to Roanoke County, again. Number three, the petition of Brad Prescott to obtain a special use permit to develop on a lot without public road frontage and to obtain a special use permit for custom manufacturing in a C-2 high-intensity commercial district on approximately 1.44 acres of land located in the 2900 block of Peters Creek Road, Catawba Magisterial District. Mr. Thompson, Director Planning, welcome again for the second reading and public hearing on this petition. Thank you.
All right, getting near the end. So this is a unique situation. This doesn't really happen that often. So there's two special use permits that are being requested. One is for the use, which is custom manufacturing. The other one is, it doesn't have public road frontage. And so we have a provision in our ordinance that says if you don't have public road frontage and you want to develop a site, you need a special use permit. The site is located off of Peters Creek Road. It's kind of located near the public storage facility there off of Peters Creek Road, not too far from north side middle school and high school. It's in the 2900 block of Peters Creek Road. It's 1.44 acres. Currently, it's vacant. Again, getting two special use permits, one to develop on a lot without public road frontage, the other one is to allow custom manufacturing in the C-2 high-intensity commercial district. Couple photos, this is the access way that goes to the public storage building. That's where their access is going to be. There is an easement on this property, and therefore they would have access along this roadway. You can see the roadway on the right-hand side goes down between the public storage facility, and it goes to property owned by the city of Roanoke for stormwater management. This is a view of the, along that easement roadway. There's, lot is fairly flat. It's got some tree growth, but fairly small trees on the property. Again, this is just showing that, that road, the access easement that goes back to the city. So the property is owned by F&amp;W Properties. They've owned it since 1998. It's been vacant. Originally, the property was purchased by the city of Roanoke, and they owned some of it. They subdivided this property off of that for, I think it was a regional stormwater management pond at the time. We define custom manufacturing as a settlement privately engaged in the onsite production of goods by hand manufacturing within enclosed structures involving the use of hand tools and the use of mechanical equipment commonly associated with residential or commercial uses or a single kiln. There are use and design standards. One, they have to meet the setbacks or requirements for a pitiful structure, and then all activities other than loading and unloading are conducted within an enclosed building. So it is an industrial use type that requires special use permit in C-2. Again, here's the section of the county code that talks about if you don't have public road frontage, that you need to get a special use permit to develop the property. Concept plan shows warehouse-like building, a little over 10,000 square feet in total, includes 450 square feet for office, 150 square feet for a storage shed. They would have additional parking spaces for customers as well. It's zoned C-2, it's surrounded by C-2, high-intensity commercial district. It's transition, which this low-intensity industrial, we would consider consistent because it does provide a buffer to the residential in such a low-intensity industrial use that would be consistent with the transition use. Public hearing, planning commission, there were no citizens to speak on it. The planning commission discussed the applicant's business and his need to expand, the number of employees, access, property history, surrounding zoning and land use, and the future land use designation. The planning commission did recommend approval of both special use permits to develop on a lot with a public road frontage, and recommended approval of the special use permit for custom manufacturing with one condition, and that's being the site being developed in general conformance with the concept plan dated May 10th, 2024. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is this site located behind Bryan Steen's gun shop?
It is.
It's not directly behind, but on the-
It's behind Slackman, chiropractic, and Mr. Tire Auto Service.
Yes, Mr. Tire. So I had a question about slide number three on your presentation, if you would go back to number three. And it was, there's space, you can see here that it backs up to some North Lakes neighborhood housing, but there's, I'm really comfortable with it because of the space in between the rezoned property and that vacant land. I know that you said, and I read in the report, that there was some property that was owned by Roanoke City.
That's the property.
And so it's that specific, that's why that's cleared.
Right.
And so is it still considered a storm basin?
I don't know what they use it for. You can see the drain, the creek coming through.
I do see that.
So I believe it probably was a site for regional, I don't know if they ever built it as a regional stormwater pond, but it is still owned by the city.
Okay, okay.
And I think this lot got created after the city owned it, and maybe they didn't need that land.
Okay.
That's why you don't have the public road frontage.
Okay, okay. Well, the, I think for this particular use and for the number of employees, I think it's probably even ideal that, I'm sure it'll all have to be cleared to put in the building. I'll ask the petitioner that when they come forward.
Yeah, they're here.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yeah, rather. I find it kind of ironic that we've got to get a special use permit to let them use the lot just because it doesn't have road frontage.
Only two instances since I've been here that this has come up.
Okay.
Southwest Wildlife Center was the other one.
Oh, we're familiar with that one, aren't we?
And this one.
What is that?
That's it.
We can talk about that later.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there any questions for the petitioner? Does anyone have any questions for the petitioner? Do we have any questions?
I have a question for the petitioner.
Okay, the petitioner, please come on up. Tell us who you are. Are you Brad?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that you may be building a building to put a manufacturing similar to the twists and turns?
In terms of what they did for powder coating, yes, but not, I don't think we'll be making furniture, per se.
Okay. I'm really disappointed.
But she's got a signed deal she wants to talk about there. Maybe y'all can work this off the-
Yes, I want to talk to you before this is, when this is over, so don't leave.
We can make it happen.
She'll hunt you down if you do. Okay. Anyone else have a question?
Well, I was just going to ask a real quick question about, I think it's probably pretty apparent that you're going to have to clear the entire lot to put the facility on that leverage.
I don't, the whole thing, no, because I'm a big proponent of shade. It would help a lot with, hopefully having to mitigate a bunch of air conditioning or fans, so.
Understood.
I would probably keep as many as I could.
Okay.
But no, I don't think the whole thing would be.
Okay. I was just thinking about the neighbors and just a visual impact, so I'm sure that they would probably appreciate it. I mean, it's to a busy, you know, Peters Creek Road, but I thought still that that might have some benefit, so thank you.
Sure.
That's really the only question I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here to speak? So I can open the public hearing and going once, twice, close the public hearing, ask if there is a motion at this time.
Yes, sir, there is a motion, but I'm scrambling to find my motion sheet, so give me one second. Pass this to her.
Page 403.
I got it.
You got it?
I got it. So, Mr. Chairman, I move to, a motion to approve, I find that the proposed special use permits meet the requirements of Section 30-19-1 of the Roanoke County Code and that the proposed special use conforms with the standards set forth in Article 4. Use and design standards of the Roanoke County zoning ordinance are in conformance with the Roanoke County Comprehensive Plan and will have a minimum adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood and community. I therefore move that we approve the petition to obtain special use permits with the following condition attached to each permit. The site shall be developed in general conformance with the concept plan dated May 10th, 2024, subject to any changes required during the comprehensive site plan review process.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Going on to item four, the petition of Jonathan Kenneth Burns Carrera to obtain a special use permit to operate a short-term rental on approximately 1.42 acres of land zone R1, low-intensity residential district located at 5909 Old Mountain Road, Hollins Magisterial District. Philip Thompson, Director Planning, for the second reading and public hearing. Welcome.
Okay. All right. This one you're used to, short-term rentals. Again, this is, we do have a special use for short-term rental. Property is located off Old Mountain Road in the Hollins District, close to Carlos Drive. The address is 5909 Old Mountain Road. It's a little, it's 1.4 acres, 42 acres. There is a single-family home on it, and it's, so it's for short-term rental. Couple photos, real quick. This is the access to the property and the driveway leading up to the house. They're currently doing some improvements and putting some walls in and improving the parking area, but you can see the house on the left there. Again, some photos of the yard, front yard, backyard. Again, they are working on some improvements along with the shed. Again, it's fairly, generally fairly flat, 1,450 square feet, three bedrooms, two baths, living, dining, kitchen area. Couple photos of the interior of the bedrooms, of the kitchen area and living area, as well as the bathroom. As you're all aware, short-term rental is defined as the provision of a room or space that is suitable or intended for occupancy for dwelling, sleeping, or lodging purposes for a period of fewer than 30 consecutive days, and is deemed for a charge for occupancy. As you're aware, that we have several standards. Need a zoning permit, need to provide us the information of the applicant, as well as who would resolve any complaints, and also parcel information. If that changes, they have to provide us information within 30 days. You know, if there is a new owner, they have to get a new zoning permit, and the zoning administrator could vacate the zoning permit for non-compliance. Since it is less than five acres, they do need a special use permit. Surrounding zoning is R1 and R2, so residential use. This development, which is consistent with this proposed use. Again, there was a public hearing by the planning commission. No citizens spoke during the public hearing. The planning commission discussed that property owner not living on the property, property owner seeking approval of the use before operating, which is rare, access, use of the basement, potential expansion of the sector system, maybe in the future to allow future long-term rental of the basement, current improvements under construction, the management of the short-term rental by a Realtor and family, and also that he has a cleaning service that he has contracted, surrounding zoning and land use, and then the future land use designation. The planning commission does recommend approval of the short, special use permit for short-term rental with the seven conditions. Seven conditions being limiting the upper level, the short-term rental to the upper level of the existing residential dwelling, which is approximately 1,450 square feet, limiting the number of overnight guests to six, requiring a parking space for each of the guest rooms, providing, maintaining public safety equipment like smoke detector, carbon monoxide detector, and fire extinguisher, and not blocking any exits, maintaining a residential appearance, and no sign shall be allowed with the short-term use. No events such as parties, banquets, weddings, receptions, meetings, or similar events shall be allowed. And then a business license shall be obtained from the Commissioner of Revenue for the short-term rental use. With that, I'll take any questions you have.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Thompson? I don't have any questions either, nor do I have any questions for the petitioner, but the petitioner can certainly step forward if they're here to speak, if you'd like to, just to... I do have a couple of questions now that I just think about it. Thank you, sir, and welcome.
Yes, sir. My name is Jonathan Burns Carrera, 5909 Old Mountain Road.
And welcome. Mr. Carrera, how did you decide to become interested in a special use permit for a short-term rental? Did you get one of those nasty letters from the county, or did you do this of your own accord?
Well, actually, I looked into renting the property. Last time I was here, talked about, my wife passed away in March, so the house has kind of become a different place. Also, I lost my son in this house right in 2020. So my family of four is down to two, and because of that situation, I felt like I would want to rent it. And when I'm looking at renting it, I want to travel a little bit. So because of that, I would also like to be able to come back to the house at any given time and cut off the Airbnb. I wouldn't have to, you know, push anyone out of the house for me to come back at any point. So I knew that there was a lot of regulation that had been changed. I know someone else that does some Airbnb-ing, and because of what they had told me, being a little bit of a shortage, they were constantly booked 25 out of 30 days in that Hollins area, that it would be a good, a good way to go, especially as far as, you know, renting it out to one person that could trash it and ruin it compared to somebody that's going to rent it for a couple of days, and then the cleaners go in, see any damage, see anything that's done with the property, might need attention to right away, where it's not a lingering effect of coming back to a house with, you know, ruined walls and cabinets torn out and rotted floors from a leak that wasn't, you know, reported or anything like that. So I want the house taken care of. My wife told me not to sell the house, so that's the main interest of, you know, kind of why I want to keep it. of why I want to keep it. And as far as some of the pictures that were put up there the last time we had talked, I do have an easement right to my property, but the easement right's being removed. I am under contract, so the 1.46 acres is going to add another 0.76 acres to that front lot that will be part of mine. So it'll be, you know, 2.0, close to 2.3 or somewhere around there. Also, too, the back part of the development that was being done, the retaining wall, it's 120-foot retaining wall that had been dug back 15 feet, has been completed. So really, all we're doing is putting the back fill in, the parking's there. Even though outside, how the house is yellow, it's going to have new smart board all around it and some veneers around it, so it'll, you know, the peel will be a lot nicer than in the pictures, and the retaining wall looks absolutely beautiful. I like the fact that I'm getting rid of that easement right, so I don't have to worry about any driveway problems or going through someone else's property to get to the property. It's all mine.
Thank you for that explanation. Appreciate you coming to Roanoke County and doing it the right way. Appreciate your story. Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the petitioner? Thank you very much, sir. We don't have anyone to speak, so we can open and close the public hearing. And is there a motion? And I will make the motion. I find that the proposed special use permit, one, meets the requirements of Section 30-19-1 of Roanoke County Code, and that the proposed special use conforms with the standards set forth in Article IV, Use and Design Standards of the Roanoke County Zoning Ordinance. Two is in conformance with the Roanoke County Comprehensive Plan, and three will have a minimum adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood and community. I therefore move that we approve the petition to obtain a special use permit with the following seven conditions. One, the short-term rental should be limited to the upper level of existing residential dwelling approximately 1,450 square feet. Two, the number of overnight guests shall not exceed six people. Three, the one off-street parking space shall be provided for each guest room in addition to parking spaces required for the principal dwelling. All parking shall be provided onsite and shall be located in driveways and other designated approved parking areas. Four, the property owner shall provide and maintain in good working order every smoke detector, carbon monoxide detector, and fire extinguisher required by law. Exits required by law shall not be obstructed. Five, the property must maintain a residential appearance. No signage shall be allowed with the short-term rental use. Six, no events such as parties, banquets, weddings, receptions, meetings, or similar events shall be allowed with the short-term rental use. Seven, a business license shall be obtained from the Commissioner of Revenue for the short-term rental use. With that said, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? They're being done with a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Number, a letter numbered N, Citizens Comments/Communications. Any citizens wanting to speak tonight about anything? Okay. With that said, then, we will move on to all reports and inquiries of board members. Mr. Mahoney?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Radford?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Tammy Shepherd?
I actually do have something that I just want to make people aware of. I have, since accepting this position, being voted in, I have been going to Mount Pleasant quite a bit, and they have, I have found my way into that community. But anyway, long story short, just so everyone knows, they are in the process of trying to re, restore a 1932 Seagrave fire truck that was originally a Roanoke County fire truck, and they're in the process of raising the money and are having a car show July 27, the Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at 3216 Mount Pleasant Boulevard. And if anyone is available and able to attend, I would love to see them be able to get that fire truck restored, and this is a way to raise the money to do it. I also just wanted to take a minute to mention that we had a volunteer firefighter that had over 30 years of service with the Mount Pleasant Fire Department. He was the assistant chief before retiring in 2015, and he passed away very unexpectedly this past week with a massive heart attack. And I just wanted to recognize him, thank his family for his service to us, and ask y'all to keep them in your thoughts and prayers. And that's all I've got today.
Thank you. Ms. Hooker?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
And last but not least, Phil North. Last week, the CTB approved $361.6 million to continue widening I-81 between exits 143 and 150 from two to three lanes. The work will begin in 2025 and finish in 2031. That's about $26 million per mile over 14 miles, seven north and seven south total. In other news, a coalition of General Assembly senators and delegates, along with the BRIC, a new group of business and community leaders, are targeting 220 improvements from I-81 to the North Carolina state line. More on this group's efforts as they develop. Meanwhile, as TPO Chair, I will speak on this effort September 17 at the CTB meeting in Roanoke. The I-73 campaign we've heard about for the last 20 or 30 years will be no more after September 17. The efforts will focus on the Martinsville Southern Connector and 220 improvements. This is a huge economic impact for this area. If improvements can be made to facilitate the flow of goods and services over that route to I-81, and they're going to be doing a study on it, and that should come out probably in late September or October. So just always something changing in the world of transportation here in our area. With that said, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
I'll second that, with a clerk call the roll.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Thank you.
Director of the U.S. Secret Service has resigned after facing sharp criticism for her agency's failure to prevent the assassination attempt on Donald Trump. Hundreds of Jewish protesters have been removed from the Capitol Building in Washington after a sit-in protest against a visit by Israel's Prime Minister, and Carmela Paris has promised to fight Donald Trump in her first rally since becoming the presumptive nominee.